Call, order roll call please.
Edwards.
Here.
Essien, yes. Hessen.
Here.
Har.
Yeah.
Stark, yes.
You all rise to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your public, our wishes stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Well, these are the fun things. I'm gonna do a little swearing in of our latest officer. You wanna stand up and give your little bio to everybody first? You did it to me, you can do it.
I'll do a bio. Uh, hi, my name's Laura Deaton. Come from a big family, five siblings. Wonderful, amazing parents, sitting right on over here. Grew up on a farm. My wonderful parents somehow homeschooled. All, all of us, all of us up until college. Went to college for four years for law enforcement. Hit the ground running, almost seven years at Perry Police Department. Couple of years as a detective, and then hopped on over here. There I am.
Yes.
Now the fun part. Now we'll make it official. So, ready?
Ready.
I, Laura E. Deaton.
I, Laura E. Deaton.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer in the city of Benton.
Discharge all the duties of police officer in the city of Benton.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
I further.
I further.
Will never arrest the mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a member. I've got some heads here. Mine don't sound like you, Tom. You're gonna start first?
I'll start the first one, man.
You're excited.
I am.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Everybody see that?
Oh, my gosh, that was fun, too.
You guys wanna come up and get your picture taken? The newest police officer, I could show.
Her dad's been a bad job.
Oh, perfect.
Well, you can come up, your mom go up there, too.
Yeah, Mom, you can come up here. Now there's holes. That works. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Should have more candy.
Nice to meet everybody. Yes, nice to meet you.
Glory, what goes for the mayor goes for all of us.
Nice meeting y'all.
Yeah, Beth started.
Nice meeting you.
She started, yeah, Beth started.
Where's your candy? Oh, the candy?
Alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? First by asset, second by start, both in favor? And motion to approve the consent agenda as written? With the bar, seconded by Cindy, sent in to see discussion.
Cindy, is the copy of your rental a yearly thing?
I think it's at four.
Four.
I have one question on the fire department and the financial administration, the overhead flags. They're different costs?
Different costs, the fire department, one of the different flags, and then we have the mayor's flag in, I believe, the state flag, and the spare one for out front here.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, what yellow pieces are falling off the new stormer model equipment at the airport?
That would be the yellow tines of the brush, I'm guessing. They tend to have loose ones when the manufacturers push them in, those come off. Depending how well it's put together, they might all come off. But I know after, this should never want to. It's a very wearable item. We're about to a big push, we're going 100 miles an hour in a circle. I seen at the airport meeting minutes, Chris, that they were considering looking about the feasibility of adding another hangar on their own.
Um, yes, they were looking at that.
Are they gonna move on with that, or look forward?
Well, they're still looking forward right now. Um, they would like to move on, but it's always the question of funding in order to move on. Also, whether or not to take federal grants, or to do it internally with the rules.
Okay, you wanna pass them along? I did just recently get a quote on a 70 by 60 fully insulated building with concrete slapping foundations. So, we're happy to share that with them.
Alright, I will pass that along.
Super. Any other questions? All those in favor? Now's the time to receive and file communications petitions and remonstrances. Saying none. Committee reports.
What was that? What's that? Uh, last Wednesday meeting you had with, uh, with the University of Iowa and the streets.
And the NK.
That was kind of a big one.
Yeah, it's a big one. We met on the sewer plant, got updated on the plans, where they're at, looked for some different kind of funding sources.
And that should be later on here, um, on your agenda as well, Mr. Mayor.
With the flood class, I guess I wanna call them out of the University of Iowa again, they wanna do another study in Benton. They did send an email out that they wanna kind of narrow their scope down a little bit. I'll see if I get responded to them yet tonight and tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I believe they want like a phone conversation with myself on Tuesday.
You're done. You're done. Anything else? Moving on to citizens' input. Hi, Dave. Been seeing you a while. It's never good.
I believe it's under.
Is it, is it C now, or?
Not yet. It'll be under new business, um, um, letter C, under new business.
Gotcha.
I got, oh, I can tell you who, uh, Lane Sila, come in and talk to me. About the dirt road, which is 61st Street, which is just south of town. And basically, his whole spiel was wanting it wrong. And widened and wrong. He brought up a lot of good points, and I think it is on the border of city, um, being in, in city limits. And with the new addition being there, safety of the school, traffic and all that kind of stuff, it might not be a bad idea to see if that could be looked at at some point.
Yeah. I think that conversation is being had right now.
I think part of the developers out there might have already started that conversation. Anything else? Moving on to old business. Now's the time for the public hearing on a proposed maximum property tax. Anybody here wants to speak on that? Mr. Ward?
This is the new, um, max tax levy that is required by the state before we actually can submit the budget to the state. Um, this is not actually reflective of the actual full amount of property tax because it excludes debt service. So, that's what it's for.
So, just so we are clear, this is not the actual levy rate. This is what the state of Iowa is requiring us to do.
Correct, and they call it.
To make it transparent.
Yes, truth in taxation, even though it's not what it actually is going to be.
Alrighty, any other comments on that? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now I need a motion to approve a resolution for the maximum property tax. Motion by bars, seconded by Stark. Any further questions, comments? Roll call.
Hessen.
Yeah.
Edwards.
Yep.
Essien.
Yep.
Stark, yes. Har.
Yeah.
Take the motion, is that?
No, 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 it's not, I'm working.
You're here. Excellent, he is proactive.
Well, I would have done that first.
Somebody has to take that role over. Alright, now's the time for a public hearing for a proposed police vehicle lease purchase. Chief, you wanna talk on that?
Well, I guess, um, I don't know. Is this for something because it's a new year, because we already did this? When we, uh, when I proposed the vehicle, about a year ago.
Is that same one?
Yeah.
Is it different than the other ones? My wife claims it's a lot different.
What do you mean?
Body style.
The body style, that's the, that's a year, year and a week behind.
Gotcha.
We did this about a year and a week ago.
Good deal.
So, I don't know.
Unless it's a sneeze.
You were waiting.
Yeah, that was the one that.
That's what I thought.
Uh, unless, uh, you wanna just go and approve the next one. Because that's gonna, that's gonna happen here shortly anyway.
Any other comments on that?
Cindy, unless you needed it for this year.
You do it each vehicle, each separate one.
Yeah, we did that, uh, last year.
A year ago. Well, Dan is right, because we did order that vehicle, and it took a year for it to come in.
Year and a week.
A year and a week. Fifty-three weeks it took to come in. So, we did it ahead of time before.
We did it ahead of time?
Mm-hmm, before we purchased the vehicle. Yeah, so we could go ahead and purchase. So, we could wait till July for next fiscal year for the next vehicle or.
But they sent a new paperwork that.
Well, it's not on our agenda tonight to do it. This is only this one.
I guess it's not gonna hurt, but I'm just saying we did this once before. They had to send a, a new paperwork to Cindy because it took a year and a half, year and a week.
Did anything change on?
The body style.
Anything changed with their numbers or?
No.
Last year, it's all.
Slightly within interest rate, I think it was a little less, so the cost savings a little bad, so. So, it's totally up to you, if it's just a formality, I guess.
Well, we're only authorized for the one right now, so, on the agenda. So, I wanna do it at the next meeting, I guess, if that's what you're thinking.
Yeah, I haven't put in for the other vehicle yet.
Okay, so we'll just close this hearing, and we'll get this one taken care of today, and then we can decide what to do with the other one.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
That's alright with you, Cindy?
Yep.
That we've already done.
So now this is on the unapproved lease.
I thought you were saying that was already done.
Yeah, we already, we already.
This is for the next one.
I am, this is for the next one.
Well, that's what I thought.
This is for this.
So, the next part of it, we, and there's no need to do D, because we already have, we already done it.
We just had the public hearing for, for this, we haven't got to D yet.
We had the public hearing for this a year ago.
A year and a half, a year.
Okay, so why is it back on our agenda? Alright.
That's why I asked Chris.
Closing the public hearing, let's clean things up. So. Alright, now I need a motion to approve fair agreement agreement to obtain easements for street projects.
So, Larry.
These are temporary easements, Mr. Mayor, for the sidewalks, for the new upcoming street projects. So, um, we did discuss, myself and Nate, uh, did discuss, um, whether or not it's a good idea to get the temporary easements or not. I recommended that to be on the safe side, we go ahead and get the temporary construction easements for sidewalks.
So, my first question is, why wasn't this included in the original scope? We knew we're gonna go do the street.
Well, you didn't have that either. At first, it was, it was going to be, they were just going to do it without these temporary easements. But I said to be on the safe side because, because the actual sidewalks are gonna be larger, wider than what they were originally put back in. It would be a safe idea to get the temporary easements.
I know there's no right to talk to John. Suggesting they talk to Phillips.
He is gonna go talk to him? Easements are a good idea.
To be on the safe side.
Alrighty, any more questions on that? Roll call.
Stark, yes. Har.
Yeah.
Essien.
Yeah.
Hessen.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Alrighty. Now's the time to set a date for a public hearing for a request for tax statements for Hy-Vee Inc.
About March 12?
Yeah.
That one?
Yeah. So, I got a motion to set it for March 12 on 7:00 PM.
Seconded.
Seconded by Hessen.
And my memo does have an error on it, I do really admit that. It's, um, it's 80% off of the improvements, of the new improvements that Hy-Vee is adding on, is the abatement for a period of three years. According to our ordinance.
Is there an estimate on that?
An estimate for the total cost. Yes, um, between one to one and a half million. Was already a base value of 600,000 for the building itself, so 30% off of that, that's about 200 or so thousand added on to, so the property taxes around 800,000 for a period of three years. And then, then up to the, to 2.1 million after that.
So, when they come back in, even in their asking, they're saying we're asking for a 3% or 80% property tax abatement?
Off of the improvement.
That does not what that one says.
That's what I did send them, in my letter, I did send them the actual ordinance.
Well, major ways clear, so we're not upsetting the apple from here, so.
Would I be at the March meeting?
I can request Mr. Rob Wade will become to this upcoming meeting. I will, I will contact him tomorrow.
Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Now's the time to discuss the letter from Tim and Jane Osborne, 615 Avenue. Tim and Jane, come right on up. Alright, so, we got your letter, and I've read it, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else.
Okay.
So, what, what would you like to discuss?
Whether or not you're gonna take the lien off of our property tax.
Okay, so, I understand you said that we didn't follow the rules, that we didn't do this. However, when this went to court, twice.
Well, this is just the first time.
I understand.
Okay.
But on, it continued to go through court, it's all through the same process, and Bob, you stop and correct me anytime I'm wrong. So.
They did it correctly the second time.
Okay, but you're asking me to take a lien off. And the last one that I have, the most recent court date was, you had asked that we didn't do a quite, an itemized list correctly. Right?
The first one.
Yeah, whatever, this last court date was.
Okay, yeah, the, the last one, the court said we don't.
2019?
Yeah, the court says we don't need an itemized list, but I do believe that that would be part of the sunshine law.
Well, it just says defendant's request is denied.
Right.
So, my problem is, we didn't assess the fines to you, the court did assess those fines to you, the magistrate did?
Uh, Chris and Bob said in the.
These were the cleanup fees, they didn't end up assessing the civil penalties because they thought the itemized fees were going to be burden enough? Because that's what it says.
We got a civil assessment, too.
So, but that was only because they said they would maximize the penalties if you refused to clean it up, if I read these correctly.
Right.
Okay, I can't overrule a magistrate's decision.
Okay, I'm not talking about that one, they did that one correctly, and, and we let that one go. About the, of the fees, whatever they are, that we didn't get, we didn't get an itemized assessment of the fees, which I wanted. But the court says we don't need it, so I guess we don't need it. I'm talking about the first one, um, the, it's dated July 29th of 2017. The court said, "The city may submit an affidavit of cost upon conclusion of the work at the defendant's property." They did not do that. They took them straight to the treasurer and had him put it as a lien on our property taxes.
Okay.
What we're asking is they take the lien off of our property taxes and submit it to the court, like the court order says.
Not a court guy, Bob.
That's pretty easily understood, I believe, sorry.
Well, are you going back to the 2017?
Yes, I am.
And I think those, all those costs, didn't you waive, didn't the county waive those?
No, they're assessed against our property tax.
They are, okay, well.
I don't know who took them there, but they're there.
I think probably Chris did, but we did not have to submit anything to the court.
No, you didn't have to, but if you had some, that's where they should have went.
If there was gonna be, you were supposed to take it to the court.
Yeah, if you read, um, Iowa Code 36422, it tells how it's supposed to be handled if you use the court. Your ordinance 55, which was in effect at that time, says what to do with it if you don't involve the court. And neither one were followed completely, it's like they picked a little bit out of each one.
Well, but we've always gone to court on these matters.
Exactly, so it says Iowa law.
Yeah, but we didn't have to submit those to you by certified mail because we went to court.
Correctly, you're correct.
Yeah.
But you did need to turn them into the court. If you were gonna assess us a charge, it needed to go to the court. We never got even a complete bill of what it was.
Well, in my opinion, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, since this thing went to the magistrate and went to the court of law, you took this counsel out of it. If you have an appeal and you want a different decision, I would say go back to the magistrate, find out if you wanna say that his decision was wrong. That's my opinion, I'm not.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the magistrate's wrong, I'm saying somebody that's here tonight did it wrong.
Well, then.
They put it on the taxes without us knowing.
And your, whoever did it's higher authority. Am I correct? If Chris did it, you're his.
Well, I absolutely am.
Okay, so what we're asking.
Well, actually, the counsel is.
Okay, the counsel is, so what we're asking is that the council request that it be taken off of our property taxes.
Okay.
It's, if you can't, law says if you can't read an ordinance and understand it, it's vague.
Okay, so we, we're gonna discuss this tonight, and that's all I can do, because we can't make a decision. But I want her back on the agenda the next one, I want a ruling by this, by the next meeting, on if we did this right. So, make that happen, so we can get this over with.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at that time, can we discuss, there were a few issues we had with the itemized statement?
We'll discuss whatever you wanted the next one.
Okay.
And I won't be able to make a decision at the next one, but we'll discuss it again, we'll have what he brings up, we'll discuss it. And if something changes, then we'll put it on the next agenda, and we'll make a ruling, how's that?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
I wouldn't leave it out, Valerie's coming.
Alright, now's the time to discuss the letter from Valerie Close. You're up, dear.
Oh, I thought you were just gonna listen to it.
You're part of it. So.
Unfortunately.
So, you got, we got the letter.
Right.
So, and, I'm gonna speak for myself and not for anybody else up here, and I just wanna make that clear. What happens, I do sympathize, but I want you to understand, I do take everything very seriously in this community. I take anything that happens to you very seriously, to her, to him, to Bob, to Chris, to anybody I don't know. This community is very important, and I don't want anybody to ever say that I do not take things very seriously. I have spent the past five weeks in conversations with Mr. Woodhouse, other people that were there, to try and render some sort of decision, what I can actually make, and make everything go away. So, at the end of all that, I have something I have to read, okay? I received this last night. Mayor Bud Mayer, "I feel there has been much too division in Benton over the past weeks, and I hope that I can have some of it by resigning from the utility and communications boards. I've always had Benton as one of my many top priorities, and I've enjoyed serving on the council and VME boards. I hope as always for the best for Benton, and therefore I do wish to officially resign from the two boards. Sincerely, Alan Woodhouse." I had somebody write me an email a while back. He said, "A bad decision, proven beyond reasonable doubt to be a bad decision, does not make one a bad person." And I believe that. And I hope this brings some clothes to it, and unless this council tells me further, I'm gonna consider the matter closed. Are you good?
Sound good with that, I really am.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. New business. Need motion, approve resolution to declare certain city property as surplus property. Any discussion? Chris, you want to throw it out, sorry.
These are the two tractors, we have the John Deere tractor at the airport. These are the two older tractors, one of them, um, I'm just going to say predates me, my existence on this planet. And then both Nate's existence on this planet as well. Um, so, um, the idea is there's an auction out there, um, possibly for these trac, these two tractors. And that's how it would be sold. One's a 1981 Case tractor, and the other one is, had to look up the VIN, and took me a little while to figure it out, but it's a 1969 John Deere.
Proceeds from that, I would go back in the...
Not only is it a John Deere, it's a 4020 John Deere.
That's true. Built in Water... Yes.
Is it a diesel?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no. I think it's a gaser.
It is. Was it a diesel?
You should buy it. City property, you know it's in excellent shape because we're spare to us best, keeping our stuff up, Steve.
Yeah, it's a, it was built, I do know it was built in Water Grove.
Yeah, I, first thing I asked you if it was a diesel. It wasn't.
So that goes back into the airport budget?
Yes, it does.
Uh, any other questions on that? All those in favor?
Uh, this is a roll call, please.
Oh, that's a roll call one? Okay.
Har.
Yeah.
Hessen.
Yes.
Fessenius. Starr.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Perfect. Not even motion to approve application to the state revolving fund for wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
Good.
Chris?
Well, I was going to point to you, Mr. Mayer, because you were at this meeting as well.
Well, I was. So, well, we found out that we're trying to get funding through two different sources, hopefully. Maybe only one, we don't haven't quite got all that figured out yet. The USDA, uh, SRF has a low finance revolving loan and/or revenue bonds. We have not quite made, put all the combinations together. However, if you go apply for the SRF loan, they will pay for...
Their engineering and design.
The engineering and design.
Without even, if you decide to go with a revenue bond, then it's still, they would still pay for that cost.
Yeah. A portion of it, not all of it.
This is due applying.
So it would be foolish for us as a city not to go ahead and apply and take advantage of the free money that the rest of the taxpayers of Iowa want to give us. Any questions?
Do we have a ballpark idea of what the total?
Have not gotten it yet. We're still trying to decide where the pond is going to be and what equipment they're, that was the meeting, a lot of it was what equipment we're going to look at. Once that gets decided, they're going to go on little field trips and watch poo get screened and all that other good stuff.
So this is just approving to move forward with the process and not...
Right, with the, with the, with the application for design and engineering for that. And if SRF pick up a ta, portion of the tab, possibly, or all.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now I'm going to have to be a roll call on to you. All those in favor? All right, not even motion to approve a sewer bill adjustment for the water line break at 108 North 8th Avenue. Now you're up.
No, I'm up. Do I need to come up?
Yeah, you do. State your name, where you live, all that good stuff.
David Boyson, 803 5th Avenue. My mother-in-law is a resident at 108 North 8th Avenue. Um, I'd gotten contacted by Doug Lawford, who does the meter reading, obviously. And, uh, I can't even tell you what day it was. And he said, "There was something going on, the water meter was just running like crazy." So I had to wait for my boss get to work, I took off, went up, and he goes, "It's still running pretty good." Uh, Doug and I went down in her basement. We figured the water heater broke loose, and it wasn't that, and I walked out, and on her back porch, it was a geyser just flowing out. So we got the water shut off. She's got dementia, and she lives on a very low fixed income, which usually relies on myself and my wife to help take care of her. She's dependent right now to stay there. Um, but we're just asking an abatement to help cover the cost. Uh, Doug asked the ladies at the front desk here to just give an estimated cost, and at that time it was $905. There's no way she, I mean, her, she barely gets eight hundred, or just, just under $900 in social security a month. And there's just no way that she could afford to pay that amount. So we're just asking for an abatement to, that $900, Chris, percentage of sewer.
Um, what I did, looked up the last 12 months, what her average cubic feet of water is, and the average sewer bill is, is only like $20.92. This particular portion of sewer bill is going to be $584, so it's $563 over the average. It did not go down the sewer, out in the backyard. Um, and it's been a while since we've had a break, or like break, what the council has done in the past is to have gone back to the average the last 12 months.
So you're saying 320 is water itself?
Well, no, it'd be 500 and something, the sewer.
Yeah, just water.
Oh, the water actually went through the air. Um, you, I mean, you can do whatever you want, but in the past, it just abated the excess over the supercharge.
I'm good with that.
So what are we, talking dollars here? I mean, if I bait the sewer...
Five, some, $563.45 back to an average.
And you said the water went, where was the break at, Dave?
It was, what it did, out of her basement, it runs to the east towards her kitchen. Then it goes left to her bathroom, to the north, and then to the south. Way back when, they used to have a washer dryer out on this porch. Well, it got capped off years and years and years ago. And what happened was, the solder just gave away. And Doug had been telling me that there was an issue, you know, just seeing the water was high. So I fixed her toilet, because it would run every now and then, so we took care of that. And then he just kept saying, "You know, it's still high, and never saw any water anywhere." So, that's what happened, was at the end, that cap, the solder just broke off, so we cut it off. Cut a hole underneath her range, and, good place to cut a hole in a nice, wonderful floor. And, uh, cut it off, and we pulled it, the cold was still good, the hot wasn't, and it was just corroded away. So it's been dripping for a while there, just never knew it, just because it was underneath the house and it never, the crawl space, Nate's been down there, like, once or twice. There's really not a crawl space where he can get to where that water sits, because there's just so much dirt and, so...
Well, I know normally our practice is to have, we bill the water due to sewer. I'm reading your letter here, that you suffer from dementia.
Yeah.
That's a horrible disease, and I don't want to burden you with anything else, so... I would like to see if the council would waive the water fee and the sewer fee at this time, just because, based on the medical history of the occupant.
I'm good. Yeah, I agree.
None deal.
Thank you.
Wait, vote for it and sue it back to the average?
Yep. It'll go back to the average.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do you need to vote for that? Since it's all, uh, like a roll call?
Sure, a roll call.
Okay.
Just through, but...
Starr?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Hessen?
Yeah.
Edwards?
Yep.
All right. Nice time to set a date for a public hearing for application for TIF Economic Development Systems for custom millwork.
Set a date for the next?
March 12th, 7 p.m.
Yep.
Come on up.
I assume you want to talk about it a little bit?
I can, if you'd like us to.
I would like you to.
So, um, we came in 2006, and bought them a door and building out there in the industrial park. And we came to you guys one other time for a TIF application, and you guys granted us some money to help with an addition that we put in after the windstorm of 2011. And the business has sustained itself and continued to grow. So this year, or I should say last fall, we started making plans to automate some of the interior and equated equipment that we had. And then we need to put in some more estimators for us in the office. The business itself has turned, and we've added a independent sales agency to the, to our workforce, which, they're independent, so they don't work for us, but they represent our products out in the field, they sell out dealers for us. And, um, so we are putting on an addition onto the southwest corner of the building. Excuse me. Along with some of the equipment that we've put into the interior portion. We've got a hardening spray line that we put in, a computerized rip saw now. We've eliminated zero jobs. We're gonna, we're still trying to hire, in fact. And our projections are to, in 2020, potentially add another two to four people yet. If we can get to our current needs, so, which is still going to struggle, it's just very difficult.
I feel you're paying. I know.
Yeah, we, we just had one leave, tonight was his last night, he's going to Quicker Writer Logistics. Can't fault him, he gave us a nice two-week notice, but it is what it is, and they pay more money, and we don't pay enough, according to what he wants in his life right now. So, um, we are supporting 12 of us in there right now. And, um, we hope that grows with the business as this year goes. So, the addition is a 20 by 30 on the, on that, it's going to increase the break room, which will give the employees a place to have a comfortable break. Right now, our break room is our conference room, our meeting room, our, it's an all-encompassing, um...
It's a little cramped.
It is. And, and, uh, we do have a refrigerator in there, but when we do the addition, we'll have a kitchenette in there so that they can warm up lunches and things like that a lot better than they do now. They have a microwave, but it's not totally, you know, or school. So, uh, it's not a hot plate or anything like that. But, uh, we'll have a kitchenette, and we'll have a meeting room. Today, we sat down with the banker, and it was in that crowded little room. And we would actually have a, a private meeting room for them. When we have an insurance agent or a banker or a customer come in and want to sit down and meet with us, we would have a separate meeting room. And then also add on office space for, Kim and I will actually move into that, and that will open up the space for the new estimators in the other part, which is the main office that you walk into now. So, um, the work is already started, if anyone's driven by. They got quite a bit framed up already this week, they started on Monday. And, uh, had it not been for the fact the steel didn't come in when it was supposed to, we might have had the roof tightened today, but they, they were doing other work. So, that's progressing. Uh, the construction company is one of our customers. Uh, he is out of Sumner, and he's really the only outside work that's coming in, otherwise everybody else that's worked on it has been, um, out of it.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Well, it's what we try to do, yeah. What else would you like to know? Like, say, any specific questions?
Boy, thank you.
For...
Being here.
Well, you're welcome.
For having a business here that's expanding and growing and...
It's been a challenge. I mean, anyone who has ever owned a business, it's, it's not all cookies and ice cream, you know? So, a lot of long hours, a lot of sweat equity, but, um, uh, we, we feel that the payoff in the end is going to be there. Our goal is to still have that business there when we're not running it. Kim's youngest son still works in there with us, runs the finished department. And, um, so the, the aspect of what we're asking for is, I mean, you know, I'll be able to collect 401K next year if I want to. So that kind of gives you an idea where I'm at.
Twenty more years.
Yeah, okay. But actually, I don't know what I'd do if I wasn't doing it, so you're probably right.
That's exactly what I mean.
And, 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 uh, but the, the, you know, what, what we're trying to do there is, is to perpetuate the business, not just run it and then have old equipment and then just quit, you know, and then have a sale. And we see those all the time. So, part of the aspect of buying the equipment, putting the addition on, it adds value to the business, but it also brings it up into current standards of where it needs to be. And all we're doing is looking for some assistance, if it's available, to help us in keeping that going.
Well, I think you got some plans here with the TIF, because it's already an urban renewable district rate.
Correct, Mr. Mayer.
Oh.
It would be a public hearing. If council wishes to move forward with that, it would be at next meeting, the public hearing out forward, and then you'd have a developers agreement, just like it would be the last time. Exact same type of deal as it was last time, so...
You were involved with that.
There you go. I was. So, I did sign it, but I was involved with it, so, but... We could probably cut down on some of that time by just getting you a house here in town.
It's been thought of, trust me. You know, coming in at 6:30 for VU meetings and then going to this, and, and, you know, we're active in other things within the city as well, so... It's, yeah, trying to stay involved is a challenge sometimes when the distance is, is there.
Well, you guys have been great community members, that's for sure.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Sure we will. See what we can do to help you expand, so...
Any other questions about it?
So, I heard you landed some bigger accounts is part of the reason for this expansion.
Well, you want to...
No, you go ahead. You're fine.
The, I don't, since we tend to be more of a wholesale type business, we sell through a dealer network. Um, you know, we, we have accounts all over the state. The rep agency is, kind of came to us in a way because of another business that decided to quit doing something. So Birch Cabinet is their, um, main source of income. They, Adam Sales is the name of the rep agency, and that was Birch Cabinet's first rep agency. And they covered the Midwest, predominantly the state of Iowa and the surrounding areas on the, on the rivers. Since Fred Adams had sold that off many, many years ago, it's, it's grown as well. So Birch Cabinet had a door line. They sold, they made and sold interior doors. And they decided to stop production of that product last year in November, was the last time you could order builders. Consequently, part of their revenue stream was eliminated. They still had the cabinet side to rep, but they didn't have the millwork and the door side to comprehend that. And at times, we would be adversaries, you know, because we were trying to sell the same type of product. So, uh, a decision was made to join, and they are ten strong in Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Illinois. Predominantly purely a north. So, uh, we're not really sure what all that may bring to them and to us. The, their goal, and so, right now, what we do is we've been averaging between 1.5 and 2 million a year in sales. Their projection in five years is to add 5 million to that.
Nice.
Yeah.
I know what the headaches come with it.
I've been through that roller coaster before when I worked at Birch. And we went from, I ran a division that went from 1.5 to 40 in six years. So it is gonna be challenging, you know, part of that is why we come for help, to no doubt lessen the burden on our financial. The banker is still there, he's with us. He's glad we're asking for help. He doesn't know what we'll get, neither do we. It could be a pat on the back, it could be more.
Well, I did thank you.
Like I said, and we will take whatever we get and keep plugging away, or don't get.
No, I wish you all the success and hopefully we'll always be a part of it, so...
Well, I don't see why you won't, you know, so... And our goal is to continue to, you know, just be a good business partner with them in this endeavor. So, and yeah, some days as a business owner, you just wanna go, I'm not sure if drinking or fishing are both at the same time maybe, but... Yeah, but you don't, you just keep plugging away, so...
And I've been a part of the company, then when I started, there were eight million in nine years. Now we're 57 million. And I was employee number 19, now we're 85. So it's, I know the struggles.
I was in the first hundred at Birch, so, and they got to 1,500. They're not, they're now, but so... And, you know, we all know what's gonna happen. I mean, stock market took a 1,200-point drop today again over a virus. It may be more substantial than what my little brain can comprehend, but it seems to be impacting all of us. We feel that that's probably not gonna change. As that goes down, things will probably cheapen up on the money side more than likely. And when people can, they'll borrow money and still build houses.
Yeah.
So we're gonna keep going that way.
Fantastic. Well, we'll have some more with the public hearing. By that time, you should have a developers agreement in place.
Yep.
See what we can do.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. All right. Now it's time to set a date for a public hearing for application to use TIF funds for down payment assistance program.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have not officially set a date for a public hearing for custom millwork.
I thought we did that right away.
March 12th.
Oh, March 12th.
7:00.
Yep. That's right, go down.
Yep. Yeah, 'cause I wrote it twice on my calendar. I don't know why, but I did.
Right at the third time.
I'm going to.
I would move...
We have a fourth one.
So set a date for public hearing for application to use TIF funds for down payment assistance program for March 12th at 7:00 PM. This should be through the EC cog and our share of that.
Correct.
To benefit the Anderson Creek Estates people. But all 10 of those lots are sold. There's 19 lots that are sold. And all of those, I think the last report I got, there was seven new families coming in with kids out there, so... Big deal. Any other questions? That's it. All righty. Reports. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For, just only have two things real quick. One, the new business improvement grant that is a portion of the hotel motel tax. By hand here, I have four applications for $1,000 grants here. And this will be before you the next meeting. So we got four different businesses that have applied for grants. And I believe we have enough funding to grant all four of those businesses. That's pretty exciting and look forward to having this in front of you for next one.
Perfect.
The next one is, speaking of grants, the grant and forgivable loan paperwork came in, both of them. And they, the state of Iowa has changed the rehab paper, rehab language, where it was 50% forgivable and 50% of 0% interest. It is now all $1 million of it is forgivable loan at 0% interest.
If they meet the criteria.
If they meet the criteria. So both of these will be before you. All $2 million will be before you at the next council meeting.
This is a major hurdle.
Yes, it was.
To overcome one of the brail schools, but...
Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa Overcom.
She here? Yeah, Chief Director.
Thanks, Melissa.
I'm here.
That is it for me right now, Mr. Mayor.
Fantastic. Chief?
Nothing further to add, unless you wanna put that to...
No new cars. No new cars.
Got better things to do. Cindy?
We have a new garbage can, recycling can offered here by City Hall, so we got two now. That makes it a little easier. And we had a Billy Constodian say yes, but then he changed his mind. So we's gonna start with a new one maybe tomorrow. And we did get the insurance dividend check from Wilson Height for $35,000.
Good deal.
I should have under new business. I would like to ask for a special government for me.
Ask away.
All right. Special Government Committee Member Nathan. I would normally say let's do it at 6 o'clock before the next meeting, next regular council meeting, but I feel like we have a lot of stuff to go through and over. So I'd either rather do it earlier than 6 or on a different night.
I would say not before the 3rd.
Okay.
Are we pending the outcome of Tuesday, or Sunday, Monday here?
Oh, okay. Do Wednesdays work for you, Nathan? Or is that a kids' night?
Wednesday's around 3.
Okay.
Thursday, yeah.
Thursday's 5 would be 5.
What time?
What time can you guys make work?
5:00 in the morning? Anytime in the PM.
5:30 PM?
What's that? I'm leaving now, man.
5:30 PM?
Yes.
Okay. And I will get you all the materials ahead of time. Should have been from last time, but we did make some tweaks and adjustments, so we'll have that stuff.
And then the review of our union negotiations with the police. Well, I've set a meeting for that once you get everything updated, correct?
It is all updated. I'm waiting. The ball is in their court now.
Oh, that's right. Ball's in your court.
Ball's in your court.
Well, it'll be at the steward's court.
It's in his court.
Did you, you haven't sent him a draft?
No. No, I don't have Josh's email, so I sent it to you, Chris, and asked you guys to get it to Josh.
Okay.
I will give you a copy of what we discussed and I will forward what we have to Josh.
Okay.
Perfect. Ball's out of our court. Anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I've reported all I'm gonna report tonight, so... Good welfare. My daughter's boyfriend, Brady Ortner, sixth place at state wrestling as a sophomore, which is a fantastic accomplishment by anybody. Great meetings with the Hobarts. Things seem like they got off dead center and just rocketed ahead. And I'm excited about that.
They're coming tomorrow. They're coming to town on Friday.
What time?
Because they wanna be part of our bike ride committee meeting. So...
Tomorrow afternoon.
Two.
2:00?
Tom's gonna talk to him about fiber as well at that time, so...
More people are going to...
I'm ready for a break from work. I might be here. Anything else? It'll be a great weekend. Election Day is Tuesday. I would encourage everybody to get out and vote.
At least everyone in the second ward.
Everyone in the second ward get out and vote. And I don't know where that school election is, so... If there's no other comments, I will call for a German, need a motion for a German, sorry.
Go move. Sorry.
All those in favor?
All right.